It's time to start, so I welcome everyone to our public town hall meeting that we host annually for our municipality. And if I can get a mover and a sector to open the meeting, moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Tension. And it will help that we can call the specialty of council to order on Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. And I don't have left three times. Those in favor? And that is carried. Now I'm going to hand it over to councillor Monty, just maker for our divisions, my colleague.
The council of the corporation of the township of Hornburn would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is the treaty nine, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh six territory, the traditional lands of indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and with a peace and friendship with all its cider peoples.
Thank you councillor Kissmaker. And item number three is review and no any changes to the agenda, we do not have any. Item number four is the approval of the agenda moved by councillor Drego Spatik, second by councillor Peter Kissmaker. Be a result that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor? And that is carried, then of course. Item number five is declaration of peer interest and declaration of conflict of interest council, you can do that now or at any time through a meeting if such a situation arises. And I don't have any paperwork present. So item number six is why we're here tonight, is a municipal presentation. And we have several slides that we'll walk you through first, it should take about thirty minutes, and then we'll have live Q and A. Over on the side table, there is a sign of sheet for Q and A questions. If you have more than two questions, you can put a slash between the two. We'll give everyone an opportunity to ask one question and then we'll bring it back into queue. Okay, so to start. There you go, so all the slides catch up. So we're here tonight to inform the municipality of what's been happening at the township, and there is a point of some project on the go. It has been very busy, and we're going to show you an order of events tonight or this evening. So we'll start out with the welcome, which I'm doing now, we have started to do, we did the land acknowledgement, we're going to do introduction, staff acknowledgement, a general overview, municipal project activities, the Hornburn Town and Corporation update, councillor Lewis, wrap-up question and end of period and closing remarks. And I just have a queue, can you please put our phones on vibrate? Thank you for that, that was all fun. Okay, so back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, council of the day started with strategic planning and we set a vision and a mission for the community, which we tweaked this past year during our strategic planning again. And basically what we're trying to do as a township is prepare our community for everyone that lives here, for those that want to attempt to visit, and for the investors for our community. And this is the focus that we've been doing in all the projects, we do look at our strategic plan, we follow it. And if you look at the strategic plan online, you can see that we have P1, P2, P3, and those are our priorities. And I'll see some of the questions tonight, some of them might be unanswered through that strategic plan. If we haven't gotten there yet, it doesn't mean that we're not planning to do that. And also at council shows core values, we did this back in twenty twenty as well, and we did things we didn't want this year when we updated our strategic plan. And we added resident, uh, sorry, integrity, accountability, transparency, hard work, respect, and commitment, and we added resident focus. And these are the things that we're looking at to try and ensure that we are, these are the values that we, that all of our policy through and ask ourselves, are we meeting these requirements when we're making change or when we're trying to implement it? And then we have the full organizational chart, I'm not going to walk you through this, this is available to the municipality, because they're going to go through each section, so it would be just a little. So I will introduce our municipal council, and I'd ask each member to stand when introducing down to the far end is councillor Peter Kissmaker. He's in his second term at council. Thank you, Peter. We have councillor Drego Spatik, who's in his fourth term on council. We have councillor Ted Shannon, first term councillor, welcome Ted.
Thank you.
And councillor Belinda Kissmaker, second term on council.
And I'm mayor Cheryl Ford, I was on council for two years and I'm in my second term as mayor.
So now I want to provide a brief update of council update, and basically what I want to walk you through is where council needs help. We have some different items that are on the board right now on the floor, and we do need community, you can see the staff, the organizational chart. We are not a big municipality, but we are undertaking big ventures for our community. The, through the COVID time, our community, the staff and council did not stop. We actually added meetings to our agendas, we're continually working. In behind the scenes, we had multiple meetings for the health and welfare of our community, but actual work at council. One of these items was our official plan, which in eighteen months was worked through and then passed through the government, which is just amazing timeline, enduring that time as well, so we do have the assistance of different partners at the administrative municipal housing barit that help us, but that is just non-numentous for our community, because it sets us up, right now, our official plan lines up completely with the current policy planning app and our provincial statement. And that was lined up on purpose, because we worked with consultants to make sure that could happen. And when does that impact? That makes us investment ready for wherever the province wants to invest money, we're ready to go, and our documents dictate that, they standard that. So the current document that's open right now, it's in Jap Horn, there's only three of them, is the community improvement plan. So this is available on the website right now, there's open comment period for this until October fifth. And this is something that this council, the previous council have highly stressed. We have done more public consultation than I can ever remember, I would love to know the numbers, because every document, all the official plan, we started out back in twenty nineteen with a survey to the community, I don't know if some of you here today provide input to that survey, and we implemented those changes. One of them was scale of digital, having payments online, being able to pay your bill, opening up the town office for further hours, and all of that's been implemented. So we take it serious when we open up public consultation, this isn't something we don't look at, we read, we think about how can we implement it, is it something we can implement? Sometimes we make decisions that aren't, you know, the service, we have the new service, like we got out with the service on Ontario hours. It was costing our municipality too much money, so we made it, we had to make some cuts there. So we sometimes have to make cuts to ensure that we're providing all the different services, but it's not done without consultation, to make sure that we are providing what we can to keep us sustainable. So this is open until October fifth, it's online right now, this is the incentive programs to invest in the community to see our community improve. And on September eighteenth, there will be a public call specifically for this document. And if you have input into that, you can email the EGO, and it's at ego@hornburn.ca, and with your, during the comment period, and then come to the meeting as well. The other two items that are really important, these are other changes that we've gotten to make improvements in the municipality, I know back in the day we used to have several committees, we created committees for a lot of different things. And that creates a lot of work, because every committee of council has to follow our agendas, and putting agenda packages together, staff time, resources. So what we've done is we've created two at council, and this was done under our service delivery review data about streamlining and making things easier for us running the municipality. So the first one is the community development advisory committee, we're naming it CDA. And this is to provide advice and feedback to council on a variety of issues, and it's a second, I want to do the big, and it's open until Wednesday, September twenty seventh, you put your application in, and we'll review it, and then four candidates will be chosen from the community. The thing about these new committee structure is that it's allowing us flexibility, that on the committee we can create subcommittees, so you can have a subtask team, and they can meet and then come back to the committee with their findings, it really makes it a lot easier for people to put their ideas in. And if you're not someone that wants to commit to being on a committee, but you want to be involved with, say, some portion, maybe Winterfest or something that's happening in the community, you can be involved and sign up just for that portion, and put your hand up for that, that you want to get input into that. And the second committee is the operations advisory committee. Sorry, the first, I just want to get this right, the CDA committee is getting involved in the community by volunteering for community development advisory committee, and providing advice and feedback to council on a variety of issues, so there can be all different issues in there. The one that comes to mind would be the Senator of Ontario, that was a part of that committee. And our next one is the operations advisory committee, so this is providing advice and feedback to council on anything operational within our, in our community. And same, same thing here, if you're not into being in the full, the full position part, but you want to give feedback to one, you can definitely get involved through the subcommittees. And these both close on September twenty seventh, and I see a lot of people taking interest in our community, and I really would like to see people to see, to step up. This is an opportunity for you to get your voice heard, and also to bring those other voices in the people that you talk to. The one thing that I've learned since I've been on council is your time becomes really short. I am not in the community as much anymore, I feel very sometimes disconnected, because I'm working weekends, I'm doing my stuff during the week. And it's everyone working together that brings all of that recommendation and consultation to council, and we can't, these five people sitting here can't do it all, we need everyone's support. Coming up on September eighteenth to October twentieth, we are going to have a train whistle survey out to the community, this is the first steps possibly of looking at not having whistle crossings in our community. Don't get too excited, this is a long process. If it from start to finish, if you don't hit any bump roads, and you get all the funding you need to upgrade your crossing, we could probably do it in about four years. But there has to be a starting point, this was actually activated through a resident, putting a request form in, an input form in, asking about this information. And this was the first, we were, we want to see what does the broader community think, is this something that we want to work for and go to work? And the last item that I want to bring up, I was asked actually tonight during supper from one of our staff members at the arena, to talk about the arena activities that are still happening for families from five thirty to eight Monday to Thursday, until September the twenty eighth. They have people off, because I think people want their council, they are not, they're still going, so you can go out and play ball hockey, there's table tennis, um, they do badminton, going off my top my head right now, I don't want to say what's not there, but those three are definitely there, two more, uh, rollers, skating. So. So as I said, those are the current items that you can get involved with in your community. We are now going to the meeting of the presentation of what we've actually been doing, and I'm going to invite Eileen Seng up, our new CEO, who, who are the presentation, and again, thank you Hornburn for coming up.
Hi everyone, thank you guys for coming today. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that the CIP, uh, the CIP will be addressed at October twenty eighth. When I'll be once upon a time. Uh, okay, so I'll go to the last question of this, of this presentation, and so again, you can review it. Uh, so just a little bit about myself, I'm originally from Brooklyn on DC, I obtained a master political administration degree at the University of Victoria, which is also in DC. Uh, I obtained that degree in twenty twenty. I officially took over from the now retired CEO of the CEO Jeremy, I officially started this position on January first, twenty twenty three. Uh, some of the current CEO for strategic priorities, which are industry teaching, the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty seven strategic plan are creating employee succession plan, implementing municipal communication strategy, as we currently have one, and enhancing and promoting the township website, and these are just a few of the priorities that we're focusing on for that, we're focusing on at the moment. Well, moving to our senior management team, it consists of the deputy for Jennifer Hill, and I'm just going to ask you guys to to stand as well by, introduce yourself to the deputy for Jennifer Hill. Uh, we've got the finance services manager, Mr. Schennier. Uh, we have Wayne Goodrow, the public works manager, Stacy Mandell, economic development officer, and we have fire chief Kyle Wong, who is unfortunately at this moment for our activity. Um, we'll move into the administration and finance team. So this team is supervised by the, by Melissa, the macro manager, and she oversees the accounting department and deputy treasurer, Bonnie Wannan. Uh, we have the administrative assistant, Shannon Fury, who is actually away this week. Uh, we've got our casual administrative assistant, Tiffany Lepowski, Sheena Kirkpatrick. Uh, and then we have our labor engineers, Chantal Leprez, if I'm saying that right, and Ali Flarvey. We'll move on to our public works head recreation department, so we've got our public works manager, Dwayne, who oversees the parks and recreation and public works department. We've got the lead hand, Jason Noverly, and then there's Patrick Kelly, who starts senior laborer. And then we also have our four general equipment operators, we finally have a full team of four this year, and that includes Stephen Verment and our Flarvey, sorry, Richard Bisham and Rob Far, who's not wild. And we'll move on to our Hornburn fire department, we've got our fire chief Miles, the deputy fire chief, Mary Kizlewski. Um, we have the fire department secretary, Shaila Pinky, and then of course we have our volunteer firefighters. And last, but not least, we have our Hornburn public library, we've got our CEO, Darnell Hill, which she's sitting on that there. And then we've got our circulation person, Michelle Ford, and our casual circulation person, Patrick Kelly and Breanna Tullford. And sorry, I'm just a monkey here. Moving on to our capital projects, these are a few of the projects that we have going on at the moment. Uh, so we have, we have our, there are probably have, we have a location target, we have personally going on, one installment, we have a fuel storage chain system and a car block system. That's, uh, we explained that that will be completed by this year November twenty twenty three. Uh, and we have, uh, we're also doing terminal upgrades, which includes electrical, technological floors and windows, and that's estimated to be completed summer twenty twenty four. A few items that have been completed within this project is the design engineering, which was completed in twenty twenty one. Rebuilding and recreating the runway acre and taxiway, which was completed September twenty twenty two, along with uh, moving to replace the runway lighting with an LED, so all of them, uh, September twenty twenty two. We'll move on to our arena expansion upgrades. So we are also working on this project, which is pending at changing scope, and we're just waiting to hear back from the ministry of infrastructure. Uh, so this addition will include, uh, the addition is the, sorry, four thousand two hundred fifty square feet, uh, which will include a business facility, a library with an integrated kitchenette and senior space. Uh, the design engineering of the park, uh, the schedule completion date is pending the change of scope. And the addition, um, it's also scheduled to be completed pending the change of scope. A few items that have been completed within this project are the, they were completed last November twenty twenty two, uh, which was accessibility audit, the top traffic survey, uh, the geotechnical investigation and diamond report, and the energy audit was completed in February of this year. The next project that we have, I'm just going over what we are seeing, but we are currently in the middle, is the replacement of the underground infrastructure and road resurfacing on Third Avenue. So, um, we will be replacing the main water expansive sewer lines, replacing the main valves, curb stops, and municipal service lines, replacing culverts and fire hydrants, and repairing the road and restoring the road edges. Um, so a few items that have been, or that, so the requests or proposals were consulting to engineers, that was awarded in September of this year. And the design and engineering is scheduled to be completed next year, and the construction is scheduled to be completed in December twenty twenty five. And then lastly, we have the pavilion of our country, which we are currently working on the outdoor washroom and landscaping. Uh, a few items that have been completed in the fall of twenty twenty two was the toddler park with accessible swing, the outdoor fitness equipment, the camping tables, bike rack, and walk-on path, and the fencing and LED lighting. Uh, and we also just recently, as of September sixth, removed this property from surplus properties list and it's now becoming a small property. And we'll move on to a few of our planning projects. And so we, we do have quite a few. Um, we have a community safety and wellbeing plan, which is going to be completed by October twenty twenty three. Uh, the primary objective of a CIP plan is to achieve a sustainable community where everyone is safe, has a sense of belonging, opportunities to participate, and where individuals and families can meet their needs for education, healthcare, food, housing, income, and social and cultural expression. The success of society is linked to the wellbeing of each and every individual. We, as you heard, we are working on the community improvement plan, we've hired a consultant for that, um, we'll hear from them on the October eighteen meeting, and this is, this will be completed by November of this year. So the primary objective of the CIP, and, sorry, should not should be the community improvement plan, is to allocate resources such as funding and support towards initiatives that promote the overall, overall wellbeing development and improvement of community. We have our rebranding and marketing project that we just recently hired a consultant for, this is estimated for this starting, this will be completed in early, uh, in early twenty twenty four. Uh, the primary objective of municipal rebranding and marketing plan is to revitalize the image, perception, and reputation of a municipality. This comprehensive strategy seeks to create a positive and compelling identity for the municipality that resonates with local residents and external audiences. And they have our consultant we hired by the township, they have a really cute name, the Faulty Man's House. Um, next we have the market demand analysis, so this, again, we hired a consultant, which will be completed as well early twenty twenty four. And the primary objective of a market gap analysis is to identify existing gaps and opportunities within the local market for economy. This analysis aims to assess the supply and demand dynamics for various product services or resources within the municipality boundaries. The analysis will focus on gathering insights that will inform strategies for economic development and community growth. Uh, lastly, we have the business retention and expansion for the VRM strategy, again, completed, will be completed early twenty twenty four, so as you can see there are quite a, there's three things right there that will maybe be completed February twenty twenty four. And the objective of this strategy is to retain and expand existing businesses within a community or region. This strategy is designed to understand the needs, challenges, and opportunities of local businesses, and provide them with the necessary support to thrive and grow. Uh, the ultimate goal, I missed it, the ultimate goal of a community strategy is to stimulate economic development, create job opportunities, and enhance the overall competitiveness of the community or region within the water market. And a few of our planning projects that we've completed are the multi-year accessibility plan, which is completed at the start of October twenty twenty three, and the municipal energy plan, which was completed July twenty twenty three. We'll move into our grants, and I, well, I've, you can just chat anywhere you need to, if you're interested in anything. Uh, so a few of our grants that we have received are, I'll start with the first one, investing in Canada infrastructure program. Uh, that was, one of them was through the rural and northern stream with the airport, we have a location project. Uh, cultural, culture and renovation street for the arena, the mainstream for the Third Avenue project, and the northern stream for the pavilion for the upgrades. We received a grant from Fedmore for the community investment initiative for Northern Ontario, that is the funding for our economic development officer position. We received a grant from Federation of Canadian Municipalities, uh, which went toward the municipal asset management program, uh, where we developed a plan, strategy, and condition assessments. There is also a grant from the Ontario Fraternity Foundation, and we received a capital grant, which is for the multi-speed ball field. And that we've, and we're looking to make requests for proposals for design and engineer future. And another one is municipal energy plan program, which is for our energy plan, and we received a grant for our, starting from the rural economic development program for the rural revitalization project, uh, which that equals the rebranding and working gap analysis project. So we've got, given some of our grants, so the first section is speaking to annual grants, where no applications required, but they apply for, uh, the Northern Ontario Resource Development Support. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund and Canada Community Building Fund. And then a few grants that we applied for and usually receive is the Canadian Heritage Celebratory for Canada grant, and that's for the candidate, the athlete, because we have every year, and the Canada, Canada Summer Jobs and Summer Experience Program. We also have an upcoming, um, grant that we were, that the municipality will be partnering with, with the Sartre County Housing Corporation, and that will be, uh, the Canadian Celebratory Airline. Um, and it's through the Small Rural Northern Age Mission. Uh, some of the, some of the projects that we've completed, um, through, um, with some funding that was received through the community, the community revitalization fund, which is for the park against two, municipal modernization program, digital modernization, which is for the website, um, another one is for user research, charge review. And last year in Canada, we received funding from the Canada Health and Communities Initiative. And last year, Canada, we received funding from the Canada Health and Communities Initiative, uh, which was then equipped towards our tablet lending library and keeping the vulnerable connected. And I'll now bring us back to Mayor Ford. Thank you, Ellen.
The working house corporation was built two years ago, a municipal service corporation. Uh, this is the first ever for our township. It is, uh, set aside for our outstanding working corporation that we did develop that had to remain sustainable on its own. So the employee, the investor that was hired there is all funded through the rent and ensuring that that's, uh, keeps that way. What we're, uh, currently, what we've done is we did, uh, get successful money for fifty thousand to do an assessment, a commission assessment of our current building. The mission for this, um, or the outlook of this housing port is actually to own multiple different properties in the future, and possibly, we've talked about at the board level, branch, or maybe into property management and support. We had people reach out to us for that support. And of course, it all comes back to it has to be sustainable, self-sustaining, that is a common tax payer's base. And the only money that's come from, it came from land of minimal funds. We had fifty thousand to do the initial start for the transition from the HPC, which I think ran the perp for many years in our community and kept people home. And, um, and then the investment into the hotel, which came from the N W M one as well. So I do want to mention our board members, this five-member board. I am the chair of the board, and Bonnie Flabot is our vice chair. Councilor Delinda Kissamaker sits on the board from council representative, Graham Drew from the municipality, and Carla Ben from the municipality. And we meet monthly, our meetings are open, they're run very similar to a township, uh, town council meeting. And, um, anyone's welcome to attend. Our meetings are posted around the community and on the website. Usually at the post office, they're posted the dates. And our administrator for the housing court is Catherine Willis. Currently, if you go on HornpainHousingCourt.ca, it's its own standalone website, you can learn more about the housing court. We do have right now, as mentioned, a grant that is open right now, is the Housing Accelerator Fund, which the municipality is exploring. If you want to apply, the application deadline is, uh, September twenty ninth. And of course, with any application, we're running into stakes. We've been looking at this for about six months, started over the HHC, and now branching into municipality. But it's one of those things, again, that we want to make sure we can deliver. And we deliver all the actionable that we're looking for, we're hoping to do that. And we do, um, there's several meetings in progress, and hopefully we'll successfully apply and, uh, try and bring more money and homes to our community. So on to housing, HornpainHousingCourt.ca, there is a housing survey open right now, and this will lead right into that application and asks a variety of issues, uh, concerns, like if you're looking at transitioning, senior transitioning. And if there's anyone that needs help to fill out the survey, if, uh, accessibility issues for the website are an issue, you can call Hornpain Housing Court as well. And if you need that number, you can come and ask them for it. I don't have one, but. So moving on. Uh, oh, sorry, we're not moving on yet. I do have special guest, uh, guests in our community today, and I'm very happy they are here. So the Hornpain Housing Court did invest in total investment. The, uh, the municipality opted to sell our, half of our ball field facility for that development. And today I have with me Evan Schinkel and Clancy Under. And, um, I'm going to invite Evan to come up and speak about the hotel. And, and we will have a Q and A, and that can be part of the Q and A questions later. Evan is very excited, he would answer some questions. So come on, Evan. And I'm glad to hear it's nice.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Evan Schinkel, and, uh, my good friend Clancy are here today. We're, as you might notice, we're starting to get going here on site and move some things around. Uh, we're exceptionally happy to be here and really honored to have such a warm welcome. Uh, so, uh, we've been working closely together with them, and, uh, as testament to his hard work, we're here today and, uh, contracts and subcontractors are in place and wheels are in motion. So, uh, you know, I can, uh, see how important this is to your community, and, uh, we won't let you down when you build something really great, high-quality and, uh, like I said, we're happy to be here, and Clancy and I will be sitting around afterwards if you want to come chat with us. So, thanks a lot.
Well, the doctor's question is, is there? Um. Yeah, it's, uh, it's been quite a road through the hotel to get to where we are. It was not an easy endeavor. I learned a lot, uh, attracting investors to our community. So hopefully I do that in the next couple of years, when we attract more investments. Because we can't stand alone with four street rentals, you do have to expand, and you have to find the different economies. And now is the time, we can learn our areas, definitely, and put on work for the expansion. And, um, and we haven't even really played a big role with mining yet, and we have nine dollars worth of us. So if there's any way that we can supplement that industry, then definitely want to go there. I know in the past, we've talked several times about, um, creating rest for how long can that not go away? You've had several meetings over the last four years, so there's other investments. And at Town Council, I have said this over this term, council as your mayor, that's where my focus is going to be, is trying to find investors to our community. We will see we attend less municipal conferences and more investor-ready conferences because the people who invest in communities are not at the municipal conferences. It's all municipal, um, councillors, mayor, staff, and you're learning about running the municipality, what we can refer to from there, and all of the projects that we believe forward that you've heard tonight, all of those plans feed into those applications. That's why we're successful, we're getting the application, and they all work together to try and gather more funds for our community. The hindrance now we're finding is that how much, you can't take it all. You can only take what you can actually work on and do it well. So we have to now be very particular on where do you want to invest, where do you want to pour. And you can see that in this strategic plan of council, um, of pretty pinpoint what we'd like to accomplish in four years. So moving on. There is, there have been some changes with our municipal website. Al- almost all of the documents that are accessible are on there. There are a couple that aren't, and one that I used quite briefly is the housing need and demand study. And it's only not on there because it's not a current accessible document, but you can refer it from your town. And these are all the different areas that you can check on our website for information. And then there's ways that you can actually stay updated because we're trying to streamline the process or staff so that when we put out a notice, that it automatically goes to WhatsApp, and you can sign up for these and calendar updates. If you need help or assistance with this, you can go down to the town hall. It's open from nine till three thirty to get set up on this, and this comes directly to you. You'll know about any public conversations, any sort of things that are happening in our community, and it's, it's really easy to use. The other one that I just got on recently was the iCity Online Canons. You can see all of what's, uh, your water bill and your taxes and everything on there, and you can pay directly through that account as well, and it's all of your property and your information. And that all comes from the public. That's what the public wanted, and that's out there. And I want to thank all of those members that put forward what they wanted because we really want to implement what everyone in our community would like to see. Now, if you can't implement everything, then you're like, I hear cool all the time. I wish I could just now my fingers and have one, but. Yeah, so that comes to the end of our, um, presentation. And we are going to open up the floor for question and answer. So as people were signing up for the question and answer period, if you have two questions, I just asked you to flash the second question, because each person will get one off of one question with three minutes, and then we'll move to the next, uh, question, and then I'll call you back up at the end for those following up questions we get through everyone that's at the app. So first off, I have Sheri that's asking, you'd like to ask to go add them. And if you go onto the mic, please. And, and, okay, if you want to, we took the, we took your email addresses because at our last study, we didn't have it, we wanted to do some follow-up. So if there's any question asked tonight that we can't give you the specific answers, we will follow up and give you the answers that you want to follow, okay? Go ahead, Sheri.
So it's just, mom, a question, I have something I had to say, okay? So back in, uh, July of twenty nineteen, I wrote to council about my concerns about ambulance response for Hornpain and the paramedic program. At the time, councillor Delinda Kissamaker was the ATSA representative for the communities of Duberville, White River, and Hornpain, not just Hornpain, but a large area. Uh, a few months ago, councillor Theorikissamaker, because I try and listen to all the council meetings, uh, brought up the issues expressed to him about the lack of ambulance service in our area. I also recall at that same meeting, that councillor Drago Stavannik was in disbelief, and I, I wouldn't paraphrase, but I think he said something like, um, if, if, if I need, uh, if I'm having a heart attack, they better be there. And Hornpain pays not tens of thousands of dollars, but hundreds of thousands of dollars to ATSA to have a service, an ambulance service. And I don't believe it's being provided to the standard that it should be provided. Last year, maybe a year and a half ago now, I personally have three friends who required ambulance service, and two were potentially life-threatening. And understandably, one of the three calls was kind of out of district, uh, with Hornpain, so it took longer to respond. But the others, that left Hornpain, when they responded, that left Hornpain without a service. And maybe they would dispatch from White River, I don't know. Maybe White River would be busy on Highway seventeen with an accident. But the two other calls were forty-five minutes, and that's in town, in town. And, you know, as a sidebar, my friend passed away a couple days after she was brought to the hospital. That's concerning to me. Um, when someone calls for assistance for their loved one who is having difficulty breathing, being told that an ambulance will be forty-five minutes away is not acceptable. And please, before anybody says, well, why don't they just put them in a vehicle and take them? My mother-in-law lived with us, I helped the ambulance several times when she lived with us. You cannot, I cannot pick up my husband and take him to the car to take, I need, I need people who know what they're doing, I need a paramedic, and I need their equipment. I'm not talking about somebody falling and, and hurting their wrist. We're, we're talking about things that are potentially life-threatening. Uh, I looked up some provincial response times, and they range from six minutes to twenty-five minutes. They got some kind of category, category one, two, three, four, five, five being the least important, can take up to twenty-five minutes. Even those very, um, low-level calls that would come out, ours were double, double the time for things that were serious. And that, to me, is not accept- acceptable at all. We paid too much money as taxpayers. It's not tens of thousands, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we want to be able to accept, if I pick up the phone and call nine-one-one, I want a response. And I want it in a timely manner. Um, the golden hour, to me, is becoming harder and harder for, to be reached in Hornpain for us to have. And how many times, uh, is Hornpain on first response or has no coverage at all? And ambulance service for Hornpain is not a sure thing, but it must be because we pay for that service. And statistics, when we look at the statistics, I, I went online and I looked up the statistics for ATSA and the calls, and it looks pretty good. Uh, I think it's eleven minutes, nine seconds on average. But ATSA is from Richards Landing all the way to Hornpain, a large geographical area. And Duberville, White River, and Hornpain are being cheated. I'm telling you, they're being cheated.
We agree with you, I know.
Okay, and I, I, I just want to make sure I know, uh, Mayor, you're, you're now on the representative on ATSA?
I can tell, I can speak to where we're at, if I have a question.
Well, I think my, my concern is, we need to receive the service. And I, I believe as a layperson who's had to use nine-one-one, who's had friends who had to use nine-one-one, I believe the service is not being here. And if they show us statistics, we're intelligent, we're an intelligent person, we brought us a long way. Those statistics can be manipulated, yes. We need more of what's happening in town because we shouldn't be losing that service. We've lost the light coach, we've lost the CNIB van. Treat and return is a big fight again in town. I feel so sorry for the hospital and people who have to go out of town. That's not at ATSA, but we can afford to lose our nine-one-one, and ATSA needs to step up to the plate.
Yeah, so just some briefing on that. So back in, um, November, when we had a new council, we did council duties and board appointments. And at that time, we had a discussion that I would go on to the ATSA board. And from that, I actually ran for the chair of the board and did voice on to Sarah, and I'm the vice chair. Since I've been that vice chair, we have now, we get written reports from our, all of the members of staff because you couldn't, um, even come into a meeting, you would just get inundated with information, and how do we keep control of that, how do we process that? So now we thought that finished, since May. And when we're talking about ambulance, it's actually a bigger issue because now what is happening is fire, volunteer firefighters, this has been happening over the course of time, having, having more are doing lip assist, but also now driving. And we know in our municipality, our liability of when our firefighters are outside our municipality. And these are questions we have, like, who's covering this? Where is this going? Is that person protected if they have an accident like happened in White River? This is devastating and detrimental to the family. So what's the steps taken? And today at our mayor's spirit, uh, spirit, he's through his meeting, we had this whole discussion again. So we, and we have implemented, since I've been, um, the rep, we have regular meetings between the three communities so that we're bringing all of our issues together to the table. And when you look at this, you think of all the time required that it takes for someone to do that, to go and do and make, get all the data. And we're unpaid, we are, we're volunteers in that sense. So we have to get the data for that, too. It's how do we make it sustainable in the long run? And how do we protect the people that are protecting us? Because right now, our tenants are overworked, or they're working single week, which is, that is unsafe in that environment. I don't want to be going into some, by myself, into a situation that you don't know what's there. So from my perspective, as the representative for Hornpain, what I need to know is, let's have a one-on-one, Sheri, and we sit down, okay? And because, and then you can reach out further, and then that fuels, I've said this many times, when I'm sitting at a table and we're discussing and negotiating what it is for the people, if I have those people in my mind, man, it comes across, there's no backing down. You're not giving me some half-boss answer for our community, we're going to fight through it. But then it does come back, let's have that one-on-one, and then we'll see. And we made a huge improvement, and councillor Delinda Kissamaker worked diligently for four years. We talked several times about beating your head against the wall, like how can we make change? And that's really, it comes down to, we're dealing with old systems and other areas that need to have changed, too.
Wonderful, I, thank you. And I think, you know, if I'm paying over two hundred thousand dollars, we deserve better.
Yes, and I want to just address, uh, Sheri brought some issues about health issues, health, uh, concerns that are happening in, in Northern Ontario. They are very concerning, the numbers, the data that's been shown is that our health professionals are decreasing dramatically, we can't recruit. And we, we have this, this came up at our mayor's meeting as well today. So what we're doing from the mayor's group on that perspective is we are actually reaching out to Dr. Burma, who's the president of, uh, the Northern Ontario School of Medicine. We're asking her directly, what does she need to make things happen? And then all of our councils are going to advocate together to ensure that we get the funding. Because it's not even when I came back, we're Because it's not even when I came back from the meeting in July with Dr. Burma about our health issues. We want to train people right in our community. Well, you have to have the support at our hospital, you have to have the resources there. And Heather and I met, our CAO of our hospital, to talk about that. It's not like you can just put a point to students there. You have to have some housing, you have to have support for them. So all of that, we need to advocate together, and our six communities are all on board with that. To advocate, say, no, you can't give us second-class healthcare. And we need the money to support it. Our tax base can't support that. We need the progress to step in and the government, so.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem. And I have Alina Lita, and it's property standards. Can I just grab my water?
Thank you, Mayor Ford, from council. My question today is in regards to the public standards in our community. So last couple of years, our community, I find it's gone totally backwards. I'm tired of seeing tractors, ATVs, refrigerators, couches, barbecues, West Coast transports, trailers, you may have interviewed by there, you spend all your time, it's not near you, and they're speaking around the streets sometimes. So I'm wondering where, in the short term, what's council looking at to fix? Because really, driving around our community, it looks terrible. And I'm embarrassed to now tell people I'm from here. And right now, I'd rather be out than in.
Yeah.
And number two, where am I for the long term? Are we gonna have someone that's gonna take care of the bylaws and look after these properties? If there's, even one business in town that they're gonna cut the grass, like all year, the grass is this way. You know, the whole town looks terrible. I've been looking at a couch and a refrigerator for four years for a corner of my property. Like Jason said, to my house. And one of other residents looked at their property. You know, and you drive around, there's another thing out, a tractor, and other, you know, another huge item.
Well, you won't have some opportunity for consultation on our property standard bylaw. So this is the bylaw that sets the standard of properties within the municipality. So if you look at all of our municipal properties as one big joint township, and that there's a standard for everyone, and when you buy into our municipality, you realize that this is happening. So now we're starting behind because we already sold property. So when this comes to vote, and I believe it's in P2, I am going to defer to staff, I mean.
For the minimum maintenance standards?
We know the property bylaw.
The laws, I can't remember off the top.
Anyway, it is an archetypal plan, but this is one of the bylaws that we couldn't do before the other ones were done. Like we couldn't do it before a zoning bylaw. And then the community improvement plans, we had to prioritize what was there. But it is on, I believe it's in P2, so that means it'll be 2024, 2025. And through that, we'll build it together as a municipality. Because as much as we have people that, I totally advocate, I probably swing more to this side or clean up your stuff, I think my property is, I want it nice, you know, I live beside their building that we couldn't take down because we didn't own it for some time. I honestly, if this day came each, I already could open you on it, like that. But, and then we have other people that have come to me as well, that hey, this is my land, it's my freedom to do what I want with it. So we have to have some, it will be a bit of painstaking work to make it, but we do need it. And it is on the plan to do it this term of council.
So just a second, ATSA, so if this plan comes into place, it's property standards, and we have a private officer, that's not gonna work. So what happens on the property now? Will that be grandfathered in?
That's all up for discussion in our public consultation, we'll build that together and decide. And then if the research gets done, what other municipalities have done when they instituted property standard bylaw? Because we're not the only municipality in Northern Ontario that does not have one. But there are communities that have instituted one, or communities that have had one for many, many years, right? So the staff does that research in the background, they reach out to our current municipalities, work together with the other people, and then we'll build that together. I can't say for sure what would be grandfathered or not, because really, it comes down to what the community wants, how high the standard do we want to set, and is it realistic that we can implement the bylaws for that standard? So there's a process there, but yes, I'm all on board because some of this whole thing, safety, of not having staircase, stair access to all of your doors near your house, that's one key thing with the safety measure. We have our volunteer department trying to access the home, but we can't get into the home, that becomes a safety issue. So that's all implemented in there too. So does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks, no problem. And we will, Alina, we will follow up to let you know the timeline of that, because this is an archetypal plan. And I have David Jeremy, couple of remuneration, remuneration, not remuneration.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm like, are you related? Yeah. Do you know her?
I do, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No problem.
Two points of clarification, but I misunderstood the process. I'm writing down, so I would like to follow up.
Okay, okay.
I had it back in the back of my mind.
Yeah.
During this process. And are you speaking on behalf of all council or?
No, all the work, if you need to, but it does still turn me in.
Okay, so I want to start it off by saying that the municipality led by council and implemented by staff, so we've done a lot of work in the last several years. I also am gonna make the presumption that all the decisions that you make as council are made through the lens of fiscal responsibility. I made that assumption, if I'm wrong in that assumption, then I should probably go straight to the law. But I want to ask a question around council remuneration and vehicle allowance. In terms of council remuneration, renew, remuneration? I'm even somewhat indifferent, to be perfectly honest about it, but I want to ask the question. In the last budget passed in June, council-mayor remuneration was increased by 88%. And vehicle allowance was increased by 150% as of June budget. So I'd like to understand, and I would love to hear from each council, to be honest, how council approved these increases in light of the lens of fiscal responsibility? And with such a significant increase, being involved in both your vehicle allowance and your remuneration, did you consider consulting directly with the community first on such a big issue? And then if you have to follow up either after.
Yeah, we'll do it.
For this process, whatever.
Yeah, we can definitely answer it. So for best practice, you want to do, you want to look at council expenses and remuneration every four years before the next election. So best practices do that in May, June of the election year of that council. Because it's a council that's not necessarily going to be elected. And last year, we did that. We ended up passing it just before we had the final dates, and I believe for the election cutoff. Because council didn't have any increases for I'm not sure how many years. And I'll be quite honest with you, 88% sounds horrible. It sounds like, oh, what, Cheryl running away with all the money? Well, the first four years, it down to like $496 a month. And now I'm just getting on about $990. So do I think that's outrageous? No. And are you gonna attract anybody to this position if we don't up it again in four years? You're not. The work that's being done, and then, and this is all done in consultation. We looked at all the works around the communities, just like I had just said. We got all the different reports, staff did a lot of work on this, and it's not something that we took on lightly. For vehicle allowance, it was within the report that what was allowable. I know for myself, I have 88,000 kilometers on my car, which was brand new in 2019. I'm gonna say 90% of that is town stuff. Because I've only had four days vacation. So am I even worried about it? No. Am I going to increase it again in four years for the next council? Probably.
Follow up now or after?
After. Okay, so on Snapper Ashi, and the same dog?
My question is actually answering the thing, so I will.
Okay, thank you. Cindy Trey, expensive, sorry.
I was about to ask you, but I do have something else.
Yeah, for sure. You're not helping whatever's here, I don't even really know what it is.
I just want to go out on a wild beat and say that the yards and property that. My issue is with the town, the streets. In the summertime, the town hires town students to mow and rips the grass on the sand roads. But I know, especially on my street and down past the bridge, they don't pick up the garbage when they're doing it. And I'm not blaming the kids because they're caught in a pot to do it. But in the future, if they possibly, you know, have garbage cans, whatever, you mow them, you rip them, you pick up the garbage at the same time. Because again, it's the town that, you know, that's the author.
Well, definitely, I can't give you a direct answer, because the first thing that comes to my mind is liability. And with students, do we have a right to pee if they're picking up garbage? Do we have a right to clothes? I just want to make sure of that. So we'll follow up with you on email for that part of the question. And yeah, there can be changes to how things are done. And one thing I do want to let the municipality know is back in the day, we used to get summer students right out of the end of April, and they would take care of our grass doing. That hasn't been happening. We're having a more and more difficult time hiring at the end of April. The job close things well, and we don't get anybody, and then we have to wait for summer students. We have had discussions at council tables, like how can we change this up? Do we have to hire contractors and the intern, like who's gonna take care of this? And what happens, and it's embarrassing to me, I don't appreciate it, I feel for the families, we've had it happen. Where our cemetery is not ready, and we need to get ready, there's no time. And all the staff feels the burden of that. So we're dealing with changing dynamics of when we're hiring, and in these current ground requirements, we don't get many applications. I'm not sure what I'm allowed to share of that, but it's, we're having difficulty, it's part of that labor shortage. So we'll follow up with Cindy on whether they can actually do that legally. I'm thinking they could, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, they're there, rips and, you know, while you're there.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, thank you for that. And I have Lauren Agish, and I don't have a question.
I have a whole question.
Okay, we'll start with one.
There's one question I had, is you guys went and gave the hotel 75% rebate on the water. That's why I was told, you know, that's when you're supposed to help them and all that. Why didn't you come see the businesses that were in shot first before you guys went and did all that? Well, how can we help?
Did all what?
Why didn't the chain out, any other business, and say, how can we improve this and help you guys? Like improve your business and bring more money in, how can you guys do that before you started raging on the hotel? I don't understand that.
Well, I think because we didn't have any processes in place for it, because that, you saw in the slide, that we're just.
I really consider that slot.
Well, we're just getting into now business retention, like in Horn Pain right now, we don't even have business licenses. When people call us, the only businesses we have is the list that we've had for years, and then we add to it. So we don't even have.
And all you use taxes even more. So how are we supposed to get any?
Well, we're going to try and help you. We have two.
Why didn't you get any before?
Okay, can you let me finish? If you're not gonna be respectful, I'm gonna have you sit down, and I'm not gonna take it, okay?
I'm gonna take it.
You're done?
I'm done, I'm listening.
Okay, we have two strategies coming up for our municipality. Why it wasn't done in the past, because we had to focus on those other things first. If we don't have zoning, we can't even tell people where businesses are going. So that had to be done first. That was almost a two-year process. We bought it under 18 months, but there was still a background to that. Moving forward, we have business retention strategies. We saw this, that's coming. We got market gap analysis, that's coming. But we can't, we can't do those end items before the other ones were finished, because then, you know what would happen? We would have had to revise our plans. We'd have to go back and revise.
That's what you guys denied us before when we asked for help.
When you denied, when you.
You guys denied when we asked for help with our building buildings.
Yeah, but we.
You guys denied us the help.
Yes, we did. And just, I have to get clarification, was this in a closed session? Does anyone remember? I just don't want to speak about a closed session if you're even allowed.
If you want me to ask these questions.
Okay, if you're okay, no, no, if you're okay for me answering here, I have no problem. I just don't want to. Okay, first of all, when you're looking at asking for rebate with OCIP, that comes into favoritism. And we can't play favorites, and we're not trying to do that. But we did do a full water survey and got consultants to look at all of our water billing, and made it as favorite, at least favorites as possible, like so that it was done in a systematic way. We actually had to revise it last year because we ran into trouble where we actually increased too much. So, and we took that and we revised it. But moving forward, no, if one person comes and asks me for some sort of rebate on its own, we legally cannot give it to you.
Why do you want to, is this by our own effort?
No, but that's what the CIP is for. The community improvement plan allows us to give strategies where we can give rebates, where we can give incentives into community, but if we don't have that, we're causing, all of us to be liable. All of us become liable to pay for that liability if it's ever challenged from anyone else. Does that answer that?
So, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, well, just a second, David, or Sherry Latoski, and I'll call you back up, okay, Lauren?
Okay.
Okay. Sherry?
This is concerning when the auditor did his presentation, so listen in case I screw up. There was one thing that I, that I thought he made quite clear. When it comes to the taxpayers in Horn Pain, most communities, 5% of the people don't pay the taxes. But the problem in Horn Pain, if I understood him correctly, is that close to 25% of the people are not paying their taxes in Horn Pain. Did I understand him correctly, Rosa? How are we going to solve that problem? I mean, everybody complains and bitches about the taxes being raised, but really, it's only 75% of the houses in town paying towards that. So we're the ones that are getting dinged, and these other people are just, the number is just too large. And I feel, I feel for you, I feel for myself.
Well, I can answer this. So there's definite strategy community, but we have been, and I applaud the treasurer for the work that she does for us, because it's not a happy work. But when we take our properties or we send out the letters to come and talk to the town, pay your taxes, that's happening now, and the problem is it shortened that time period to two years now instead of three. And we're on top of that all the time. So that's a system that wasn't in place before that is in place now. And I can almost remember the meeting, the first time that it was going to a family. So this is, this is real. It's not, we all have to pay the taxes. And at the municipality, though, there are measures, come and talk to us ahead of time. Don't wait till you get that final letter in the mail, and please disclose that to other people. It's not, we all understand that people go through hardships, but it's when the person is perceived to be able to pay, and they're not paying, that gets frustrating. But we do work with everyone that comes and talks to us, and like I said, it's a very difficult one to do. And any other strategy, I know that the treasurer is often, and does try and find other ways, collection strategies. I think we even asked that question to our auditors, like how would we do this? Because we would like to bring it down to 5%, I would like to see it there. And the thing is, we see that role within our community, more people will be out to pay. Because I'm not sure who said it earlier, maybe it was Alina, about not even being embarrassed, but not even want to be here. Well, that feels, that feeling's there, and then you have to pay your taxes, though, right? But I assure you that everyone at this table, and everyone that are in those offices and across the board in our municipality, we are working, we all live here, we want to see it grow and thrive, and that, and we saw the mission statement, that's what we work for. So is it gonna be solved overnight, Sherry? No. But those systems are in place, and it does get difficult, I know. I'm sure you've heard people complaining about milking the township that, you know, they bought, you see millions. And the same thing with water. The same thing's happening with water.
Just wanted, as a taxpayer, I don't want the town to take their property because we own too much property. Now, I like the concept that you said they're looking at different collection methods. That I think is an important statement. I don't want us to have our own feeling. That I think is an important statement. I, I don't want us to have it in our community much and we don't pay taxes. You know, township wouldn't pay taxes to itself. So, okay, the, the idea of doing different collections makes a lot of sense to me.
And we can have a follow-up email for Sherry, one different, we didn't have any other taking location. Okay. And um, David?
Thank you. Very appreciative of your information.
No, that's already, that's already.
I want to explore, I want to explore this vehicle allowance. I uh, I worked in the public sector for many, many years and traveled a lot, so. But the vehicle allowance I'm asking about is separate from the allowance that you receive to travel to a nor, good road, et cetera, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So vehicle allowance I'm asking about is a hundred fifty dollars each house received each month for what's, what's put in the budget. So, and then it was doubled, it was tripled, right? That, that would, under the context. Um, so my question around that is what, what, what exactly is that, is that stuff paid for? And if it's a hundred and fifty dollars a month with a big vehicle, if you own a big vehicle, that's roughly ten cars.
Yeah.
So um, even with four mileage unit, we rounded it down with three hundred kilometers was all you got out of that. That's suggesting that council was driving around town a minimum of ten kilometers.
So let's clarify, if it's a lot, I'll just clarify that. He said, if, if I say it wrong, please correct me. It includes our internet because during COVID, we all provided our own internet service with no um, payback for that. We did all of our meetings during that time.
But it is a cost.
Internet, it costs a hundred and ninety dollars a month. Well, it, it is an expense and then, and then there's no excuse not to have it and it covers the personal use of cell phones and our vehicle allowance. So it wasn't just a vehicle allowance that we got doubled.
In the budgets existed.
Yes, and we can update that in the budget to give.
So it also pays, it also pays three hundred and ten degrees and up to eight.
Those are the three, right? Vehicle, cell phone and internet.
And just one last follow-up from the bones of that. Uh, on that, was there any consideration given to any sort of tracking of mileage that council was putting on your vehicles to help justify that? Or is it just a cart launch?
No, there's no tracking of it and it's not just for vehicles. It's the sixty dollars.
What a good portion of it is, is there any tracking?
No, there's no tracking.
And would the council consider that?
Um, I think it may be something we consider and talk, but if it's going to cost more to track that, I don't think we track.
Cost of traffic on your own.
But I, I, we can be open to that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And.
Mark, please. This is the public works. Um, all summer along that park beside my house, it's not even. Why? You guys took all the kids right down by the empty hill. You stopped representing the way at my parents' house. And then I was told they're on vacation and then I don't know. Now, if I have to justify my hours to pay my taxes with a work report in my shift, I think works department should be doing that too.
Okay, first, this is the first time I've heard of that.
It's sad you've heard that because I've already complained numerous times.
Okay.
And I think upon myself, volunteer, even do the digits along my street and cut that grass. So I just, I think.
Okay, so when you say, just clarify, when you say complain numerous times, how is that done?
Personally to the people, the Wayne, Jay, I don't know, basically.
Okay, the best way, and I'll tell this right to the municipality, the best way to put anything into the municipality is put it in writing. Okay, I'm not sure.
Are there any repercussions?
Well, I'm just, I'm giving you advice here, Lauren, on how to actually get things done. Is that those, the, it creates a paper trail and then we can follow up. I think there, if it's going to uh, calling, just let me finish. There's two liabilities when uh, a resident addresses a public employee, okay? We don't know what's been said there. We don't know who, what the issue was. There's no follow-up in that. And that's not the right communication process. Is you go into the, either township, put it in writing or in the info, put it in writing. Because then there'll be actual follow-up. And then you can say, hey, I put this in on the first of July and it's still the fourteenth, it's still not. And you're asking me questions.
Is, is anyone watching the work? Like, does anyone audit what we're doing besides the Wayne?
No, Wayne is our public works manager and it's his staff and his department.
Okay, that's a nice question.
Okay, there is opportunity. Did I miss anyone with a second question? Okay, there is opportunity at this time to come to the mic here. Welcome to, just state your name. And it still allows you to get one question. Please try and keep it to three minutes. Hi, Anna.
Hi. Um, I just want to follow up on one more and switching. Um, I understand that as a taxpayer, I don't always know what's going on behind the scenes. I use the proper processing. I think I use the green forms I have many times. And I am truly frustrated by them. Um, I have had great communication at times from the CAO, uh, present and past when I did not feel my responses uh, came to any sort of solution. I have had many times where I waited a long time, hard out, not even had a response. So I'm just wondering, is this a process that continues to work for you guys? Is this something you're looking at changing because honestly, sometimes it's more frustrating to get that response and you hear, well, this and that, this is why we can't do it. Like, that's not what I want. I, I, I'm coming to you with a problem. I want a solution or at least to feel heard. And often I do not feel either of those. So I have learned from some of my responses. I know in the past, you know, there was potholes or there was something and they were really bad. They were waiting on material. That made me feel better, but hearing we don't have staff, uh, we're going to look into that and then nothing comes of it. And when I'm bringing forth concerns over and over again, related to my property and my community and they're still not being dealt with, that's extremely frustrating.
Yeah.
And like Lauren said, you know, where, like I, you said one of your things that there are accountability and transparency. So when it comes to public works department and priorities, is that something that could be shared? You know, I've heard people say about the streets not being done and I'm one of the first ones to say, hey, maybe there's something else going on. But why maybe can't council or staff come and say, hey, I know we usually do this, but we're not doing it because of this? Because then maybe taxpayers would feel less frustrated and they're wondering why. How do we stay there now?
Yeah, so to answer your question and to address, there's two, there's two parts or two answers. The first is ongoing for the last four years, we had it in our first chief plan about adding a communication policy. Because I'm a strong believer that if you put a request in, you should know how many hours, when you're going to get it turned back and then you can follow up and be like, hey, I haven't even got back to me. And I'm, I'm thankful to you and Anna for using the system because it highlights all those areas where we need to improve. And that is actually on the CAO's uh, priorities. I think it was on their list, the communication penalty of that's happening. And, and to point taken of other bylaws, we couldn't do that before we had the other ones started because we would have been reinventing the wheel three years later. So that is coming. Um, the second portion to it is for public works is like we are doing uh, municipal minimum maintenance standards. So that is each road, so one aspect of that. Each road gets categorized. How does that snow removal happen? When will it happen? What uh, what's the amount of snow that's going to fall for the municipality? Does that grow? So, and that's under the minimum maintenance standards and we're just developing that now. And that's not going to happen overnight. It'll probably, I'm not sure how long that'll take to finish, but I would, it will be implemented by this term of account rule. So that's where that's coming. Those are those questions that you have answered. Those are the things when you, why isn't the grass being cut? What, and then there are some labor shortages. Like, you have no one out there to cut the grass. And we've had these discussions. It's like, do we have to, do we have to supplement with contractors? We've had this discussion of um, with even just taking care of some of the projects of say painting and our building maintenance in our community. Do we have enough? Because when you're looking at, you might not see the public works department in our community. Well, I know for, I, I think it was two weeks, they were out at the sludge pits fixing a problem out there with our excavator and taking care of that, which you have to do. There's some things in our municipality that, yeah, we want to cut the grass, but that isn't um, by law that we have to cut the grass. But we have to by law make sure the sludge pits are working properly. So those types of things are happening in the background too. But those are the two pieces of um, policy that need to be put in place that will definitely address those issues. And, and I do want to thank you and anyone out there that I understand that it can be frustrating to try and get an answer. But if we're not trying to work the system to improve it, then we're, we're not working it, right? Like, and let's work together. Like, we want to work together. And the staff doesn't want to, no one wants to sit and feel like, oh, I didn't answer something or something got missed. Whereas if we have the system in place, it doesn't get missed.
So the process then is the green form and then to, I don't know.
Well, I don't even know what the actual, I don't even know what the, when we finalize the communication, I don't even know what the actual process, like what those timelines will be. They won't be laid out so that like, for the, and I, I've said this many times because I run into it in there. I'm like, you want to help me talk about this? Can I talk about this? When do I talk about this? When do we notify you this? So I, like, there's, or when do I dress? Like, we had um, just recently, we had some people wanting to have one-hour meetings. Well, do we, how, you know, when I have that, before we have a discussion, is that, if somebody, you know, begin or, so there's, so there's some questions that need to be answered there. And I don't want to lead our community down and back to showing plain favorites. I don't want to do that either. I want everyone to feel like they can come to the municipality, get a fair shake and know that they're going to be heard.
So at the current time though, we submit the green form and then?
Well, it's not actually called a green form anymore. It's an info, info, or technical request for service that it is, yeah.
Request for service.
Yeah, yeah, submit that and um, for that. So it gets submitted and then we delegate it to the right department. So sometimes it comes to me, sometimes it goes to the public works manager, sometimes it goes to the treasurer. Just depends on what the request is. But I just want to assure everybody that your request is looked at, it's monitored, it is addressed. I try to answer every single, I do not try, I do answer every single one. Um, you know, there's many things that are happening in the day. So I try to get to them as soon as I can, but I take them very seriously. So um, they, they are addressed, they are, that account is monitored. Um, so yeah, it, that's the current process. So you're not, it's all, it's not always going to be answered by me. Because if it's for a different department and there, that's their expertise, it goes to them and I let them, I delegate that to them and, and they can take care of it.
I have a question. Is there any way that consider this green form? Like, I work all hours. You know, I don't always get to get to the town and get this green form or whatever it's called. Is there any way that you could be an email?
It's on, it's on like, it's on the website, yeah.
Okay, so the process then, so if, if it hasn't had a response, is it okay then to reach out to your boss? Because I don't want to put more work also on, and that was my understanding from it. I just want to make sure that that's the process.
All the requests just still go to info@hornedpain.ca and then it will get followed up, like it'll get delegated that way.
Okay.
Okay, so if you do have any follow-ups, I would just send it to info@hornedpain.ca.
Okay.
Oh, Sean, you got another question?
Oh, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. Okay. Um, thanks for your presentation earlier on the update to township projects. I just had a message from someone who's at Old City that wanted me to ask a question on behalf of themselves.
Yeah.
Is that all right? You had pretty quick when it came to the updates of the community um, arena project. Um, and you mentioned something about the ball field, multi-ball field area. And I believe if I'm correct, you had said that they were in design phase?
We were going to be set, issuing an RFP, so a request for proposals for that design engineering in the near future.
So then the process I want to first know is in the near future, um, request will be sent out to team uh, to design the actual field. And then it'll come back to council with their recommendations. Um, they were also wondering timelines and just ballpark. So just be fair.
Ballpark. Well, I think this first, do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
So the first timeline is done at the end of March, we have to have that um, the design feature done. So once we see what that entails and then it'll come back to council and then the full timeline council will decide at that time probably on speech with ballpark.
Okay. Uh, yep, and then so after council said whether or not they accept the design?
I think we'll, we'll have to be for council at this time. We haven't seen the design. It wasn't outlined. It's like, I don't know who they say him, I don't know. No, we did put parameters into what we wanted and that, but yeah.
Okay, so then the next step after accepting the design, then you can create your construction?
Yeah, tendering. Now we have to look at our business, how we're going to pay for it. If we're going to go after other funding models to try and have that. Once we have the design, that gives us what we can apply for money for, right? So that helps us as well. So from that council will decide at that point. And we did, we did ask staff, like we've asked for some extensive um, modeling report on loans and that's um, all our different capital projects and that's coming in this fall so that we can inform the budget in a way that was sustainable into the future. We don't want to cap ourselves on what we can apply for and spend all our money on one certain project. Great. We want to be sure that we're sustainable into the future and as loans come available that we're spending in our community.
And then in supplemental, that um, the funding that was already granted um, for that project was in that earmark that was sent, sent for, for the ball field project.
Which, the hundred and fifty?
Uh, for the, you had your revenue grant.
No, you made a grant fund. So originally we had um, actually a quite extensive uh, application to go in. And at the time, the funds would have covered that application. After the rise, yeah, after the rise, we had to uh, change and now we're going to the phase approach. So phase one would be the library and the weight room and we're at, we're writing the process now with the change of scope. Irene and council, Peter Keston, we go into AMO and that ministry, it looks promising. They're going back for us to get that change of scope. And then that would be the first phase. The second phase, we have to look at our arena surface, ice surfacing material and our curling club, especially the curling club surfacing material. And keeping the hooligans and that sort of thing. So that would be the second phase and then maybe some upgrades within that. And then the ballpark, when we talk about the ballpark, the standalone issue is not really included within the phases of the arena.
Okay, so funding, or do you have a type of grant for that order?
No, right now for the phase one, we've already been successful. It's just a matter that when you apply for funding, you put certain criteria that you're going to meet for the funding that they're giving you, that you're, you, you promised that, right? Well, we can't, we can't promise everything that for that funding. It doesn't pay for it anymore. So that's when we had to pivot. We would change the scope, pick the two projects that we can pay for, which are needed because it would free up our curling club, club room, and then we would have the weight room facility and our library, which, and the library has been in council chambers since 2010. So um, yeah, so that, that would, and there is a portion, like there's our municipal portion. And that's part of the um, loan that we're looking at this fall. Sorry, the one you were asking was the ODF coming for the baseball field. For that one hundred and fifty, that's all for design of baseball field.
Baseball field.
Yeah, and that, that was fully funded through the Ontario Trillion Fund. Yeah.
Wait, thanks.
No problem. City's mine.
Um, I just want to touch on a man who has said, well, the request was service warrants?
Yeah.
Um, I put in a request in public office. And I know Irene explained to me how it works. I went to her and then it was sent to the supervisor, the other bird. Then it was back Friday and it come back to me. But this one time when I bought it, um, the explanation of why they wanted to build or whatever was written down on the, that explanation, but it wasn't signed by the supervisor. So I asked Irene, is that, was that her explanation or was that the supervisor's? So to me, if supervisor is explaining what's going on and why they can't do something, they should be the one, they're named to it. You know?
I'm just going to refer this guy, Irene. I, the one thing I would say. I'm just gonna defer this to Eileen. I, the one thing I would say is that in our municipality, at the way our structure, our organizational chart is, is Eileen is, she can speak for any of her staff and sign for anything if she wanted to. I just wanna clarify that because it is
But it would just be nice to know if it's her words or his words or, you know, who's saying what.
I think that might be something that we need to clarify in the future. I don't wanna put you on the spot here, Eileen, right now, but it's a few.
Especially for paper trail, um, it's a significant. And
Um, I just, and it, sometimes it's conversation, right, that it involves multiple people. So I think that, and the best way to answer this is just, um, if it's coming from me, then I obviously had some involvement in answering that question, right? But I, I'm not an expert in a lot of these areas, so I do reach out to different members of our staff, right, of our team, so I get their input. Um, I think it's, it'd be hard to, like
So I tell the part out to go to that supervisor, and you forward it to that supervisor.
Yep.
You know, they filled it out, know their explanation, should they not be signing? Their explanation at the bottom, and then instead of that, you, you send that to me? There should not be the minimum, why not?
I mean, it's a, it's definitely something, like, we're always looking to better our processes, so if it's something that we need to look further into, then I, I understand what you're saying, like, you
You know, we're saying that.
Yeah, yeah, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Sean, oh, Laura first. Lauren, then Sue, and then Sean, how's that?
Well, I'm more talking about openness and transparency, uh, seeing what's going on. All I know as counselors and people, you're very busy. A lot of what you're getting here is criticism. But from going before, you started your Facebook page, now you've got the website. To find anything out about what's going on in town, you have to go through either watching this, they're long and boring, reading through minutes, which are long and boring. There's lots of things going on, like you're saying. Ball field, hotel, all this stuff. Why can you not, uh, even Hormine, like the arena, the recreation things going on this summer, people didn't go on? Until somebody else put it on Facebook. I know it's gonna take extra stuff, if you can get someone to look into to put on your website or something, and have highlights of things that are going. I let people know that the burn damage may make. Instead of people coming and criticizing and nobody getting back, it is kind of super, not, nobody's talking about it. Bring it out there, watch your child, just like, hey, this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing.
Have you tried the calendar, Laura?
I've tried, yeah, I, I know, I don't find it very, uh
Like, we need the calendar, maybe all the updates of what would be happening. Yeah, I think that, and then it comes right
Maybe it happens, yeah, but I do find a little bit around it different than it really is.
Yeah, 'cause you can get, you can get the alert, and I just, I, I try and focus and use that first before we try and make other improvements or go in. It's really, what we're trying to do is create a forum where you have the website, everything's on the website, everything's there, you can go there, and then Well, but also it gives the right information, and then we not posting all over, and then you can actually sign up to get that information delivered right to you. And it's, and it's not, you just sign up, you're not Yeah, there's
Nobody's out there, what a thing. There's a calendar, just look at what we got. Nobody knows. You're like, looking, looking, looking. And there's no
Yeah, so this is all
We're doing, we're doing some great stuff. Let us know, so we don't fucking ask everybody.
Yeah.
Putting behind everybody's back, saying, tell me what's going on. And if you do hear, you wanna be known, put it out there. I know this is an issue, we're lucky. I think, I think that way you get more community happiness and welcome. It, it's kind of safer to me. It's not very open.
Okay.
That's
Well, I would suggest to anyone to try and sign up for their news page and the calendar. And then I'll, I'll defer, um, the municipal office there, in the glass cabinet there, that has all the updates that's regularly updated and, uh, the information there. We do put postings around the community for updates, but we can't control if they get taken down or someone takes the, the, the staff can't go back or check that. But the lock cabinet has all the regular, up-to-date updates. But I would suggest if you are on any sort of, um, if you have your email, to sign up the calendar and the news update.
I don't know if council is aware of, uh, the fact that, um, if you have a water break and locate it, ask them then. I don't know if you're aware of it, but in the last four years, we had three breaks, and they all ended up shut off. The first break that we had, we waited three months for it to fix. The second break we had, it, we had to wait, and all of this had to do with the locate, we had to come down by the company that has to turn away every day. The second break took nineteen days in January, with water running all around my house, running across the neighborhood. Garage, and we had to hire our own backhoe. We had to relocate the water, Christmas of a town, we thought it was gonna be flooded. The next time we had was a year later, we were advised that the reasonable break happened. This is when they were fixing the break, they stood on my water line and broke my water line on the other side by the street. So that happened to just me, and now every day when I walk, I watch that treated water running down Third Avenue. And I watched it for a week and a half, and I'm running like a river. And I gave nine hundred bucks every three months to water because of my brother. My God, can you not get somebody to give you a locate last twenty-two days? For a senior citizen like myself, who ran over the water flooding my basement, flooding my neighbor's yard? It's January for plastic, everything's freezing. My husband died, eh, we're out there, we're, we're shoveling it. We bought a backhoe, we hired our people, Glenn, we're digging in our front ditch. We're digging from our house to the front ditch in January, we're getting the water running away from our house, and they said, it's not working, we can't do anything. Because we're waiting for a location.
When were your, um, water breaks?
Um
Were they previous to July of twenty twenty-two?
Well, we had, it was, now it was past, when you commission people, wow, we're gonna be here back.
So just so you know, that
Shut up, I watched that treated water running down Third Avenue. I woke up Thursday, I was holding my shoes, I saw, from drinking glass from the wheel stops.
Okay, so two, there's two answers here for you. The locate, uh, first of all, we went to the government last year. They changed the locate policy substantially. It wasn't just Hormine, it was all across the province. But we did go back to that, and they are now, uh, there's certain mandates, there's fines in place, they have, they can't give us BS answers why they're not in our community. The current water break, I'm not exactly sure. I know it's already been told that it's to be fixed, but I'm just not for the timeline that's actually the locate or the, or proof that's fixed in, could, is there information on that tonight, or are you on hold of?
Uh, I think all of us are
Okay, and she'll follow up with you on that, feel what's, I, I don't believe that necessarily the locate
You know, I follow up, all to say is that these locates are real wrong.
Yeah, I don't think this
The water line like that, there's a lot of damage. I have read on my scratch cards too many times. Because they dug it out, and I had a fifteen-foot deep hole in my front yard.
Yeah, I'm just not sure in this current situation that's happening, if it has anything to do with the locate, so I just wanna make sure of that. Because there, there are stringent rules now in place for locate, and it was fixed in July of twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-two last year. So, uh, so I don't see that being a problem. In this current situation, I'm not sure. I'm thinking, maybe more, um, that So, but you'll follow up, you'll, you'll, and I just want clarification, okay? And me and I, and Sean? Oh, that's all right.
Um, just wondering if, if back to the request for service warrants, if it could be considered whenever, um, someone inputs one? If they can be kept updated as to where their request for service is in process? Whether that one has been opened or received, or if it's been passed off to someone, or it's been held? It seems like there's been a lot of, um, people left lying there, wondering what's happening with the request for service without being kept, with that, to where it possibly is. I think that may be potentially helpful for people, um, communication standpoint.
No, thank you, I know what you're saying. Yes, so what happened? Lauren's asked, all right, Laura's asked back, how, um, our hotel is getting the lottery rate, right? We had asked council for a break when we purchased our, um, our They just started clarification, so who feels obligated for lottery? Well, there's kind of been a difference in, because that was, we did a whole, um, consultation period to make sure that there wasn't showing pay or to the board or charging, and that was the, um, to get back from the, from the consultant, did, with
Okay, so, so how is a hospital and a school end up paying almost three hundred bucks? The whole of the
Well, we'll, uh, follow up with the whole report and look at why that was chosen that way. And follow up with you, but it wasn't, I, I don't wanna call it a remake because it wasn't a remake. We actually did a whole plan and tried to make it as fair as possible. Okay? Lauren, come on.
I would just like to defer comment on Laura's comment about, um, what council has accomplished. Uh, mayor and council and the administration and staff have accomplished over the last little while. And, um, I just, my big suggestion is, please, um, uh, in the past, I know that I've hit this as well through my work. I, you know, I have way too much on social media, and I know that, um, previously there's been that council has often, um, put, um, the adults, you know, in regards to what's being accomplished or what's up there, what's happening in our community, uh, in the arena. So, um, I, I would just like to suggest that maybe something like that is, look at again, that we consider being held, I'm looking at who's possibly involved, but you're looking at being transparent in this way as well. So I would just wanna
No, I totally hear your comment, Laura. We've discussed that kind of thing with that, even in some of our water bills or things that are going up there, that is obviously putting, uh, negative in there, some sort of marketing, and so that we can be connected. We, uh, it was, uh, brought council table during winterfest at the Flyers, and we moved now for winterfest, and things like that, and there was a outreach then, and I think that's something that will continue, that will improve and continue to do it, so to be fair. Any other question? I don't wanna close it too quickly, because everyone has that lingering question, they're like, whoa, we'll get, uh, the ashtray, there are a lot of questions. Okay, I'm putting it out there for one final call for questions, I hope that, uh, things were answered for you tonight. I hope that you can see that the municipality and the staff was working hard in the background. And there are opportunities, like I said, to get your, if you want a direct handful, if you want us to go on a search for that way. When those times were open, please put your comments in because it makes a difference. And, and we don't just turn a blind eye to it. Once we've made the decision and all of these replaced, it becomes very difficult and very cumbersome to go back and open all of that up to better who do it at any time. But we have the past, there'll be things that we need to, so. Well, with that, Emily, you wanna say anything more?
Um, no, I just, I'll follow up with everybody that I have on my list here, and, uh, and like I said, we're always looking to improve our processes, so, um, we do have it on our, you know, I, like I said, I'm trying to, uh, promote and advertise for the website, and I'll definitely take all these, like, all this feedback and input that everybody's given for the website and for, um, promoting and advertising more so than the community. So I just wanted to mention that, that, like Cheryl said, I, like, we take your input and feedback. Um, it, it matters to us, so I do listen to it and, uh, um, we do consider it, and we try to improve our processes as, as best as we can.
Thank you. So I just want to thank everyone for coming on today. We appreciate that, council, we really do. We've had, uh, I think one or two time calling, there's two people, and there's a lot of work on it, and we do appreciate caring what people have to say, so I do thank you for showing up tonight, showing up to your community. And I think there are people online, and I think the same to them, and I do ask at any time if they have questions. No, I'm fine with it. So from there, uh, I think a rumor and a senator for adjournment, please, move by councilor. Peter Tissomaker, senator by council, the only citizen Tissomaker. You have resolved the bylaw number twenty twenty-five, being a bylaw to emergency, and the council has their special wheels meeting coming on Wednesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. You're very reserved, that is, I consider, every time, wine and house, those are favor. And that's carried on, so, and to adjourn, move by councilor. Teshon, senator by council, one, Tissomaker, he has resolved the council, is here by adjourned, the special meeting, council, hold on, Wednesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, seven forty-five? Seven forty-five, yeah. The favor, and that is carried. Thank you, everyone.